[laughing]
Township of Precipity, Troy Hills Township Council Agenda Meeting, September 15th, 2015, meeting called to order by myself at 7:30 PM. Please rise for the flag salute. Mr. Stanton, if you would.
My pleasure, allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Corriffi.
Here.
Mr. DiPiero.
Here.
Mr. Paluso.
Present.
Mr. Stanton.
Here.
Mr. Valori.
Here.
No, his, his not. Your light should be on. Is it, light's not on?
No.
Just give, give it a test again.
I think when you press it, it only works. Now I'll hit it.
No, it's, but normally it's on all the time.
Oh, I see.
Let's do any opposite.
Okay, others present. Mayor James R. Barberio. Paula Cazarelli, Assistant Business Administrator. Justin Marchetta, Esquire, filling in for Mr. Anglosino, Township Attorney. And Nora Jolie, Deputy Register. The purpose of this meeting is to set the agenda for the regis, for the regular Township Council meeting of September 22nd, 2015. Formal action may or may not be taken.
Statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on January 8th, 2015, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared on both the diary record on January 12th, 2015, and the Star Ledger on January 14th, 2015, and was forwarded by fax out of local newspapers and local radio stations on January 8th, 2015. Note, council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision Public Access Channel 21 at 11 o'clock AM on Sundays and are also available for viewing at www.precipity.net.
Okay, ordinances for second readings and public hearings. Ordinance 2015:25. Any questions, concerns? Okay, status of adopted ordinances. Ordinance 2015:13 was removed on August 18th, 2015. Ordinance 2015:19, adopted date, August 18th, 2015. Mayoral action, August 19th, 2015. Effective date, September 8th, 2015. Discussion, reminders, scheduled meetings, September 22nd, 2015 at 7:30 PM, regular meeting, October 6th, 2015 at 7:30 PM, agenda meeting. Minutes for approval, none. Mayor?
Have nothing at this moment.
Administration? Bids taken? Seal proposals for Smithfield Park, new multipurpose field and general park improvements to be taken, none. Quotations, proposals, qualifications received, May 1st, 2015, 11 AM, sealed qualification statements for risk management, consultant liability insurance broker of record services. Requested, none. Ordinances, none. Resolutions, any questions, concerns?
I have a question on the Council President Smithfield, the first one, Tomco Construction. I understand there was supposed to be a presentation tonight by Jim Walsh from the Parks area. Is that still going to happen before we vote on this?
That originally was on the schedule, but it was, that was on the, the original agenda that we got.
Councilman, I, I did not effectuate that part of the agenda. I don't know, I don't have a confirmation whether or not Jim is coming.
If, if worst case scenario, excuse me, can we possibly then table it? Because I had some questions of Mr. Walsh in regards to the, the work and some of the specs on it. If, if that's not going to be an issue, I don't, I don't know.
You know what, Councilman, I, you know, you have, absolutely. I mean, I, I.
Because I know, listen, we, we want to get that work done out there.
Right.
I just want to, if anything, educate the public.
Yeah, if I knew he was a Bee-Ha, I would have had him here so we could push it off to, to next week if you want to.
Yeah, I mean, that sounds, yeah, the original agenda we got last week had him. He was on it for presentation, but he wasn't on this one.
I'm, I'm not too sure who, who was to confirm that, so.
All right.
Absolutely. If you have questions, yeah, absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? Okay, Township Office reports, engineering report, Mr. Stanton.
FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Project. Elevation work phase four, five, six is started, will continue through the end of year. We've been asked to acquire two properties that were flooded during Hurricane Irene. One's eligible for funding through both the FEMA grant and the Morris County Flood Mitigation Program. The other's only eligible for funding through the county. We're working on the FEMA and county grant documents and ask the Township Council adopt a resolution to support for these applications. Office recommends Council adopt a resolution of support for these two applications.
Resolutions will be prepared for our next reading?
Yes, can we get those for?
Yes, we'll, we'll see to preparing those.
Thank you.
Okay.
Major Soil Movement Permit. First Hartford Realty Corp., CVS Route 46 West, Block 411, Lot 1718. Planning Board has approved a major soil movement permit in conjunction with the site plan application for CVS store, unreferved property. This office has reviewed the application, recommends the Town Council approve the permit by resolution.
Can we have that resolution?
That is on your agenda for your regular meeting.
Okay.
No Passing Zones, Route 202, Resolution of Concurrents. NJDOT investigated the current centerline pavement markings on Route 202, determined that the markings are in compliance with the current design standards. No changes or alterations will be made. In order to legally establish the no passing zones, the NJDOT request the adoption of a resolution of concurrents and support of these zones. Office has no obligation to the recommendation. A resolution of concurrents must be adopted by the Township Council.
I have a question on that, Justin. We went to a DOT meeting and the representative from the DOT indicated that we did not have to formally pass a resolution since it was late. It was not required, they're moving forward with the project. Can you please confirm that with the DOT?
I will call down and we'll confirm.
Thank you.
Speed limit reduction, Frontage Road, Littleton Road, Resolution of Support. NJDOT conducted a speed study along Frontage Road, Littleton Road, which led to the former ramp onto Route 80 East. Based on the results of the investigation, the NJDOT recommends reducing the speed limit from 45 miles per hour to 35 miles per hour. The adoption of a resolution of support is required in order to enact this change. Office has no objection to the recommendation. Resolution of support must be adopted by the Township Council.
We will prepare that.
Yes.
Thank you. Well, other or no change? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our CFO is not here tonight.
Attorney? I just want to add something for finance before we move forward. I was asking a number of questions in regards to the, the bonding and where we are. Just so the public knows, Standard Empores did a review of the township's rating and the AA rating was upheld, which is great news for our township. It enables us to bond at lower percentage rates. So it's very good news. So I, I thank the, the CMFO for doing a great job on that.
Thank you. Attorney?
And no report at this time, Council President.
Thank you. I knew I saw it on the agenda. There it is. Township Officers Committees. Okay, also discussion requests from the Economic Development Advisory Committee to amend the Township Code.
Yeah, what was, what was that concerning?
I, I don't know. It wasn't.
Let me.
Don't put anybody in the spot, just.
I think these things came right on.
The Economic Development Meeting, they had a meeting, they elected officers to that group. They want to make some revisions to the, the ordinance. They want to revise Paragraph E to state that a quorum shall consist of five members until such a time that the committee membership exceeds six members. Reason being is that there's 10 positions that are, are available. Five of them were already filled by council and in May are five, which is still filled by your office.
I want to explain, I've tried to fill them and people did not want to take them. But in the future, you have a chairman of that committee, from what I do understand, who never contacts the township, never contacts me, and when he has his meetings, he ignores the administration. Therefore, you might want to tell your chairman to contact me and if he would like to help fill some of those seats, we can do that.
Absolutely.
But he does not contact me, he does not in any way communicate with me.
I think all committees should have open communication. So I'll, I'll relay that to all my committees that I represent, I suspect some council members.
And he's more than welcome to come to my office to discuss.
Very good.
If you don't mind me asking, who's the chairman?
Mr. Frank Cahill is the chairperson of the Economic Development Committee.
Okay. All right. I've opened dialogue.
The second thing that they were asking for, the committee is asking for revision of Paragraph B, that the advisory members be added to the committee to provide subject matter expertise, such as commercial real estate brokers and business owners, largest taxpayer, engineer, and marketing. We'd like to expand upon that. So what they're asking for is that if we can amend the ordinance to include people that do not reside in Precipity because we need the experience that's on the committee. As a matter of fact, I attended a meeting on September 14th with the Morris County Economic Development Corporation in which seven EDACs were there. So the economic development committees of different towns do enable that to happen and they find it to be a better economic development committee helping our community. Also, they want to revise Paragraph E to allow committee members to vote by proxy if physically absent from a meeting because of the lack of members that are on there. So that was what was sent to the entire council via an email from the Township Clerk dated 8/17/2005.
Does that say seat on that?
Let's see. I am not aware if the Township Clerk, Yancy, was on, as top of you on that. I have the email here and it just says hello everyone, does not say who it was sent to.
The concern I had about that was out of towners, there should be a stipulation in there about some percentage, you know, we don't want it to get lopsided. You know, one or two maybe, I, I don't want to see more than that from, from outside the township. I have no problem with one or two, but that should be stipulated in there someplace.
The, the other thing too is I, I don't agree with proxy voting.
No, I, I agree with you. If you can't make the meetings and you can't vote.
If you can't make the meetings, your vote shouldn't count.
Yeah, I, I agree with that too.
You know, typically in economic development advisory committees relative to the non-resident, usually it's a business owner here that's not necessarily a resident. I don't know if you contemplated that.
What they had indicated to me was that they're looking for the largest business taxpayer to be involved, but unfortunately, you know, which is Matt Calley as one of them, they expressed interest of, of joining the committee, but unfortunately, they do not reside in Precipity, but they like to represent.
They have many.
And that, and that's typical of what Councilman DiPiero said, a percentage.
Right.
Sometimes are business owners, not necessarily residents.
What I like to do is, I like to suggest to them that they look at two other communities that have an ordinance in place which does allow that and to see how they have crafted their economic development committee. They're well established, see how they function, because according to their meeting at the Morris County Economic Development, they're working very well and they're very open to working with us. So I'll ask the chairperson to contact them and to, to work with them to get more further information, I guess.
Okay, anything else?
In reference to township committees, I do want to recognize the chair is here from the Historical Committee and she is here this evening. And I did receive some communications in reference to the proposal of parking at the historical building that we have for the high school students. So there's some matters that need to be addressed and I believe that was copied to all councilmen according to this and the mayor's office as well.
Thank you. I'm just getting back to the last thing, so you're going to get back to us after these other towns, these other committees?
I will ask the chairperson to do so.
Because I think that's a very good idea to have these business people on that as well. But like, we stated earlier about a percentage, we don't want more than, more of a percentage of out of towners that we do in.
Correct.
Okay, communications, correspondence? Any questions, concerns?
Before you go into public hearing, I just wanted to, just to make mention, I just, I just want to bring to the mayor's attention and obviously the council president, you know, Mr. Kimmy obviously had basically retired from the planning board and Mr. Casey Perique has been involved with the zoning board for a number of years too. And I know we talked about in the past in regards to folks that either retire or have been around for a lengthy, you know, obviously amount of time serving, serving the town, serving the public, and I was wondering if we could put them in for some type of awards so they could get recognition for Mr. Kimmy obviously being on the planning board for, I think, over 20 years?
Yes.
And then for Mr. Casey Perique, he's been involved with the zoning board, I think, for almost 20 years also. So if anybody has any issues or concerns, I know we brought that up in the past.
We, we had that in place for years.
Okay. I was just wondering if maybe we could get something for next meeting?
In some time, it got lost, I think when Alicia Johnson was here, I think that whole thing went south and got lost. We should be doing that. We have some others too, we have.
If, yeah, if there's anybody else?
Steve Dickens was on the Board of Adjustment.
Absolutely. So if we could get something maybe drawn up for next council meeting?
Well, I think what we need to do is go back and, and make, make that list because.
Okay, what we'll do is if, you know, maybe by the next day or so.
I would say, I wouldn't say for the next meeting. I would say for the next agenda meeting.
Okay.
Because when you, you know, are, there are, have been a lot of individuals and usually you would do those type of awards when the person's, I mean, I don't care how you guys want to do it.
When the person leaves.
When the person leaves, not when they're still here.
And you notice, and, and I.
Either way, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, I, I agree with you and there are folks that just hang on for so long when they're serving and we want them to hang on even longer, so I like to give that little bit of a recognition too. So if there's anybody else in minds or in hand, you know, please, we'll, we'll submit the names to your office and hopefully get something going if that's all right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time entertain a motion to open up the public hearing. Or, excuse me, applications, we have none. Okay, at this time entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Paluso, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton? Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Corriffi?
Yes. Okay, please state your name and address, sign in, give them five minutes.
Mary Prizicky, 273 Marcela Road.
Yeah, give it a second or two, Mary.
Tap on it a few times.
Wait, hold on, no, we'll get a.
Time's up. Thirty seconds, Mary. Thirty seconds, I'm not kidding.
I'd like to, I'd like to pass these down on behalf of the Historic Society. This is one of our major events that we do that we would like to make the council, I think the mayor is aware of it. I think Michael is, he's a member.
Oh, it's working. Okay.
Okay, Mary Prizicky, 273 Marcela Road. I'm here on behalf of the Precipity Historic and Preservation Society. I happen to be on their board and we do have board members here tonight. When we became aware of what was going to go on at the Bowlsby de Gallokey Museum, of which we have opened three, six times a year because when you people got the grant, one of the obligations of the grant was to have the museum open. And we're a volunteer society, we'd like to give to the community, which we do, and we'd like to spread the rich history of Precipity, which is tremendous, from the Revolutionary War all the way through to, to present day. The, the people who served, who, who were, who were representatives, who established this town. One of them, you see there, is the Bowlsby de Gallokey House and it's named after Bowlsby because they were the founding fathers of that area and the Presbyterian Church. And in the pathways, we are highlighting one of the, George Bowlsby, he died in the Civil War at the age of 18. And the reason why we feel that, that area is important is because of the three Civil War soldiers that we are highlighting in the pathways, all of the structures that they lived in exist today. Preservation and history is important. And then when we heard about the parking situation that it would be shared with the Board of Education because the juniors did not have proper parking spaces or whatever, it became a, a little issue with the society because we're volunteers, we come and go during the week when we clean the house, if we have displays to set up, we're there. The, the fact that it is a historic building and it's not a commuter parking lot, which it would become for high school students in my estimation. And it, we didn't mind maybe to share it jointly, but share means 50/50. It doesn't mean 15 parking spaces for students and five for us. We, we need space that would say reserved for Historic Society members. We have guests that come in, we don't want to issue them permits, it's not our responsibility to do that. So before you bring up the ordinance for the second time, please read our concerns, read our concerns about the ordinance and then you make the decision on it. That's what we're here tonight for. And this isn't just a one person's opinion. This was done with the board's approval and it went out to the society members and the majority of us have this concern that the incumbents of putting that parking lot into the Board of Education's purvey just, I feel, is not fair to the people who really try to highlight what you people own. And it's not just Bowlsby de Gallokey. We do the Littleton Schoolhouse, we clean the Smith Baldwin House, when, when you people get that together, that's our job to assist you. So don't make it inconvenient for us. So please do read our concerns and then make judgment then. I appreciate that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
And thanks for the DOT, 35 miles an hour on Littleton Road.
Good evening, all the councilman members. Thank you for giving us the opportunity. I'm here in behalf of. Sure. Kaiten Patel, 3316 Lenox Drive, Fellon, New Jersey. This is for renewing the basket of CIO license. You have put down some recommendation, I just want your clarification if you can. The very first item was outdoor lighting, we quickly inspect, we got this letter yesterday, so we definitely inspect quickly today. We found there were two, three bulbs that were off, we'll definitely replace it right away. The second thing was all employees to wear a staff shirt or something, uniform, and then there is licensed employee. So we definitely want to abide by whatever the township laws, rules, regulations are or whatever recommendation is. We probably need a little bit more clarity into how to proceed or what's the procedure. So if you don't mind, one of our members will contact the township and try to get an idea of what the procedure is for getting a license or the training that is required. I'm going to skip to number three and I'm going to go number four first. The smoking area, definitely it's a very great recommendation, we'll keep it off. It's good for us, security for us, everything we abide. The number three, which says that we need a security officer or security guard for the three days that, from 6:00 PM until the closing, for security reason, and that's what, we, we are in a bar business, we are in liquor business and everything. Safety is what makes us concerned. We want, you know, definitely safety for the township, citizenship, and we want to also abide by the governing laws. That's not an issue. The only thing is this is a bar. If we know what we did wrong, we definitely want to correct it. We definitely are here to support every, you know, citizens they have, I mean, all the citizens. So what I'm, we are asking is, it's detrimental for us to put a security guard, you know, it's just the nature of the business we are. At the same time, we want the total safety for, you know, all the citizens. So if we get a little elaboration on what made you all to come to this point, we probably, if I, I just request you that we probably get an opportunity to correct it and see if it works. If we correct ourselves, then we probably don't want an officer at the door.
Yeah, just, just for the record, you know, in regards to these standards of what they're asking, we as council members, we, we did not put those list of obviously items together, one through four. So this is all news to me, what you're bringing to our attention right now.
Right.
I'd like to further say that this is the first time seeing this in front of me.
Yeah, same here.
Yeah, we never, I mean, saw this kind of things before.
It's actually the recommendations from Detective Conklin, Investigative Division.
To the Chief of Police.
To the Chief of Police.
Yeah.
So it's not coming from, from council, but they are asking us to approve this. So it's the first time we're seeing it as well. And you said, sir, you received this letter yesterday?
Yeah, yesterday, I think.
I'm sorry, sir, you're going to have to come to the mic.
You can just come up.
His back is gone. Nick Desai, 85 Papsco Drive, Precipity.
You're stating that the officer just, somebody just delivered this to the store yesterday?
Yeah. Actually, it was yes.
Day before, yes.
I see a memo here dated to the Chief of Police dated September 11th, so I'm assuming.
I think it's September 14th over here.
Are you Mr. Kamandi? I'm sorry, I didn't get your name in the beginning. That's your, you're the corporation. What is your name, sir? I didn't get it.
Kaiten Patel.
All right.
K-E-T-A-N, last name Patel, P-A-T-E-L.
You know, Mr. Patel, why don't you give me a call tomorrow morning and, and, you know, let's talk about this. And, you know, let's talk about this.
Okay.
All right.
I believe the...
I don't know what the council's actions...
There's a timing issue.
Okay.
Before Yancy left, she made me aware that, I believe, your license is going to expire in the next couple of days. And the council needed to take action. However, they were waiting for the recommendations of the police department. Based on what the council decides to do with this resolution, the council in Parsippany is the de facto A B C board. So, whether it makes a determination, pass the resolution as is, or to modify some of its terms, it's up to the governing body. And then any appellate process would be with the A B C.
You know, to be quite frank, I'll say for the record, you know, this memo was turned in on July 21st, and it's truly unacceptable to be presenting that to us. And three of us are police officers or former. And I think it's unacceptable that we got to make a decision based on your livelihood. And some of the recommendations, I'm not quite fond of, or they could be modified. And maybe we can make some, obviously...
Can we do a conditional approval? So, we don't put them out of business?
Absolutely.
And then review?
Yeah, I think that would be more than fair.
That is an option that you have, yes.
When we get to this on the agenda, we'll make our... You can stay, and when we get to this, we'll hear what we're going to do.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, because I just saw this now. Yeah, that's absolutely, yeah.
Nancy Brighton, 24 Maplewood Drive. All right. Good. As Mr. Peluso said, I am here tonight as the Chair for the Historic Preservation Committee, and I have a joint hat. I'm also on the board for the Historical Society. I sent comments in via the email that Mr. Peluso referred to. But to also reiterate what Mary said, we're very grateful that the council went after, helped fund the grant that restored the Bowlesby de Gallokey House. And so, the Historical Society is looking to do its part by helping to maintain it and to have it open to the public, which is what the purpose of a museum is. We are very fortunate, and I'm sure that council and everyone is aware, that one of our members is actually a professional archivist. And she is donating her time, working with us as volunteers, to organize all of the historical documents, the various papers and maps and artifacts that we've received and collected over the years, to organize it so that we can actually use it and do a lot more programs. So, we're looking to expand programs at the Bowlesby de Gallokey House, at Littleton Schoolhouse, and all the other houses that we happen to own. So, we are trying to set up more programs and to have this ordinance that requires us to share the parking lot. We need, we really wanted to have a firm understanding if this is going to go through, how this is going to affect us in the ability to have programs during the week, which we sometimes do with schools throughout Parsippany, as well as other groups, as well as to be able to do the work, as Mary said, and even if it's going to affect after hours and weekend hours within the school year. So, having that sensitivity, that we are looking to do the program that Mary passed out about pathways to history is in October. It's during the school year, but it's on a weekend. Is that going to be, you know, how are we going to be impacted if this ordinance goes through based on how the school and its activities and its ability to use the parking lot under this ordinance would affect our programs? So, we're looking to expand programs. We need to understand how, you know, we need access and how we're going to be able to have access, how this ordinance is going to be able to affect us if we're going to share, that we have very tight processes and rules on how that sharing is going to occur, so that we have access when we need it. We inform people when we're going to be using it, and we're informed when it's also going to be needed. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Good evening. My name is Edward Belinkas, 415 Route 10 Randolph. I'm the attorney for James Karifi. And it's my understanding that he had sent letters to the council with regards to being reimbursed for the false criminal charges that he had to defend himself against. I'm here to basically say that I had represented him throughout that process. And that process, you know, continued over an extended period of time. And the end result was that James Karifi was cleared 100% of any and all of those false allegations. And it's my understanding that the council has taken action with regards to other members who have also been cleared of false allegations. So, I'm here basically, on his behalf, requesting that you consider that reimbursement. Those same false allegations are now the basis of the administrative charges that I'm representing him on. And those charges, there's a motion pending now to dismiss all those charges. I feel confident that they will be dismissed based on the law. You now have, and I'm not sure who authorized this, two different attorneys representing the township in an administrative hearing, Mr. Trimbley and now Mr. Driscoll, Mr. Engessino's partner. And again, I'm not sure who authorized that. But again, two lawyers are now representing the township in that matter. So, I'm here basically, if anyone has any questions with regards to the criminal aspects of the case, the administrative aspects of the case. But the bottom line is, you know, he was forced to defend himself. You know, he was cleared of all these charges. You know, those same allegations form the basis of the civil lawsuits that are pending now. And I believe one of them, a trial is starting next week. Parties have been added. Aurora has been added. You know, as far as the administrative charges are concerned, you know, to this date, I still have not gotten access to Aurora's hard drives that they downloaded from Mr. Karifi's computers. You know, I still haven't gotten the entire Internal Affairs file, which I'm entitled to because that formed the basis of these charges. So, I'll deal with those matters. But it's important, you know, that the criminal matters are resolved now. And he's entitled to reimbursement. Sir, you said your name is Edward Belinkas, Attorney? Yeah. Okay. I did receive some communications from your client, and I did pass them along to the administration. And I've asked back in January, March, and April to get some determination from our township attorney. But I would have to defer to the legality of the matter with the township attorney, and I've done my due diligence by referring it to him. Well, my problem, and I don't mean to interrupt you, with the township attorney making that call, he's subject to the civil lawsuit, number one. He's an indispensable witness to the administrative aspects that I'm having. I intend to subpoena him. He's the one who basically ran the Internal Affairs investigation on behalf of the Township Police Department. So, again, him not making a decision, I don't think he's the person that you need to be requesting information from. You know, he's a witness in the administrative matter. He's a party to the lawsuits that's pending. And he's going to decide whether or not someone who's going to sue him is actually going to, you know, allow the council to reimburse him? It doesn't make sense to me. I've never seen anything like this.
And this is Council President...
I would have to defer this to the township attorney because he is representing the council in this matter. And if he is in conflict or anything that you had mentioned, then he needs to advise us of that, then.
And I just like to follow up on...
Before you do, Councilman, Council President, just for the record, although Mr. Belinkas knows that I can't comment on this matter, I would advise that the council refrain from further comment until we go into closed session to further advise.
The only thing is, what I'm going to say is, I know it's already been on the record, so I'm not going to jeopardize anything that's going on here and, you know, between other dialogues that went on, is, you know, I understand where you're coming from in regards to the reimbursement because I know that that was already discussed out in public. And I know that in the fact, there was other members of town council that obviously got reimbursed. And, you know, I didn't think of what you just had made mention of, obviously, the attorney being in conflict. And hopefully, maybe, I don't know how we would work this out, is to have someone maybe review this and give us a decision on it.
Here's what I could say, Councilman Boy. To speak on the matter, considering there is still ongoing litigation, is not something I'm going to do tonight. And that's what I believe he's trying to do, is draw us out to make comments with regards to the case and the dependent civil lawsuit as well. I'm not going to answer any questions. I don't think it's a good idea. There has, you know, for me to come up here and actually have him come up here is just really not advantageous for us to respond tonight. So, we could talk like closed session.
No, and I understand where you stand, and you're obviously, you know, you have your point of view. And I know Mr. Peluso had just mentioned that, obviously, he had inquired about it. I would just suggest that if, in fact, it's in our policy, it's in our ordinance for someone to be reimbursed, if, in fact, they were charged criminally and obviously cleared, to further complicate this, to draw us into even further liabilities, I think that we should try to get this matter resolved so we don't make a big spectacle out of this issue.
Well, we're not making it. This gentleman is tonight.
But I'm just, you know, the point is that, you know, I'm giving him the benefit of the doubt, saying, obviously, he was cleared of wrongdoing criminally. Our ordinance states that you would get reimbursed.
And so, for everyone's clear, he was never even charged. This was just an allegation, and it stemmed from the township attorney. So, for you to seek advice or recommendation from the township attorney, again, I would ask you to, you know, to look into it, to look into that.
Counselman Stanton, what time do we have left?
He's got like, sorry.
Okay, he has time. Okay, he was interrupted?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, again, he was never charged. This was just an allegation that was sent down to the prosecutor's office over and over again. One allegation was cleared, then there was another one. And again, this is all behind the scenes, secretive allegations. You know, it's, his name is smeared in the press, and then he's cleared. And then, all of a sudden, low and behold, after the Chief of Police says under oath that he's not going to be charged administratively, he's charged administratively.
Mr. Belinkas, as Council Vice President, I need to interject and say, is your time up, I believe? Mr. Stanton? Okay. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
I appreciate the...
We have to give professional courtesy. Everybody watch the time. But, sir, I do have one question for you, which I do need to ask. You had mentioned there is a hearing coming up, a case. Can you tell me the date of that?
I believe it's Monday.
I was not aware of that.
This Monday?
This Monday, there's a hearing scheduled, I believe, in Karifi 1. Your answers, I believe, have been stricken. You know, there's going to be hearing, after that hearing, the trial starts.
Okay, so the trials start after Monday?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I was not made aware of that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nicholas Homiak, Lake Hiawatha. I'd like to say something in reference to the parking with the Historic Society. If I have this correct, there's another part of this equation. They're going to be taking the buses to the Knoll Golf Course. They're going to park in the back over there. I don't understand how high school kids, and I think the equation tipped when the juniors started driving the cars, how they're allowed all this power, how the town is bending toward juniors in high school so they could bring a car, congest the roads, pollute the air, not use their legs, they're young men. Are they, is it that far that they can't walk? I just don't understand how seniors or juniors in high school can have this much power over a town. So, now we have the historic properties. It's going to be clogged up with cars. And we're going to have buses moving through the town to the Knoll parking lot. Well, anyone figured out how much extra that's going to cost the town? With the gas and the snow plowing and the, you know, the extra trip that the buses are going to have to make? It just all seems very absurd. It just seems like, oh, look what we can do. We have the power. We can give these kids parking spaces. But at what, at what impact to the town? It's just, it just seems so ridiculous to me, so.
Just a quick question. How many buses actually are they going to be staging up there at the Knoll?
I think 19, from what I heard in the last town meeting. That's 19 buses.
I wasn't sure if that was confirmed. And is that where, is that where the old pool used to be? Is that where they're going to have them, over there?
That's where, that's where we proposed where the old swimming pool was.
Swimming pool used to be.
That's a, that's a vacant lot.
Yeah, I know.
It's not used at all. But it can't be used yet because the, the school's transportation coordinator needs to be near the buses. Right now, she's in a building in the back.
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, that's going to be statistically not best.
So, the building that was there for the swimming pool, with showers and running water and toilets and everything, is rundown. It has not been maintained for years. The swimming pool is not used anymore. And there's no heat in there. So, before the school could move the buses up there and the coordinator, they're willing to move her if she can use a part of that building. That's, that's a year away. I mean, the building has to be looked at engineering-wise. Right now, Jimmy Walsh turns off the water in the wintertime because it was only water.
Okay.
It was only for the swimming pool, which is the summertime. So, the pipes would have to be protected, and heat would have to be put in there before the coordinator could use it. So, the long-term solution is to move the buses up there and give the spaces on the school property back to the kids.
So...
So, right now, there's 19 buses, and there's 19 spaces reserved for the bus drivers who park their cars there when they take the buses. That's 38 spaces.
Maybe I might have a quick fix. Remember when we had the folks in here that were going to be using the other building that's down the road for the special needs issues and the Boy Scouts? They're going to be using that building? Which was a house, one of the houses. I know we discussed it during the one council meeting. They were all here, and we were going to let them have the funding to do some improvements on that building?
Where?
Up at the Knoll Country Club. Down off...
Was it adjacent? It was Parks and Rec. It was a, I think, a raised ceiling area, small ceiling area.
I mean, the red, I know she was...
Are you talking about the amphitheater?
Yeah, I guess the building that's over there? There's a house over there?
The amphitheater? Well, there's a house there, but that's occupied by the Greenskeeper.
Right.
Full-time. He rents lease.
But wasn't there some folks that were with the special needs that are going to be using the building inside?
The Asperger's group.
That's the amphitheater.
Okay, yeah, so my point was, can there be a slice in there that we could, obviously, put those, that individual, so we can get those buses parked up there? Then we won't have this issue with the...
Okay, go ahead. It's just, the underlying thing is, we're teaching our children that they have rights with no responsibilities. They're juniors in high school. They should be told that they can't take the cars, that they should walk. There's a limited amount of space. If you park in somebody's driveway, you're going to get a ticket. We shouldn't be kissing their tushes for a privilege that it's just, it's too out of scale. It's too out of scale. It's just, it's ridiculous. We're teaching them to have rights with no responsibility. That's the underlying message. And that's one of the reasons our so-called United States is in the shape it's in because everybody has rights and no responsibilities.
I got to say, I disagree with you. You're a 17-year-old kid. You get your driver's license, something you look forward to. You finally get to drive to school instead of taking a bus. You should drive to school. You should find a parking spot.
You should use your legs and keep yourself strong while you're a young man.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just to clarify, okay, the twelve years that Mary Pazicki's talking about, if you go back about nine years ago, okay...
Now, we're talking about the twelve years, where the buses are parked now?
The buses have been there all this time.
At the, at the high?
That's right.
Yeah, that was my point, is that if we couldn't move them up there...
They're taking away spaces at the high, but they're not taking away spaces at the hills. It's all this side that has all the buses and the bus driver's cars.
Okay, so my, my...
But let me, let me make my point, okay? So, about nine years ago, they were parking on Ferran Drive behind the high school.
Yes.
Behind the football field, okay? And those residents were up in arms.
Yes.
Because if you have, and valid concerns, if you have a kid parking across the street from your driveway, one to the right of your driveway, one to your left of your driveway, you can't get out.
There's gonna be issues, yeah.
Okay, so they had valid concerns. So we listened to them, and we put in the no parking signs down along Ferran Drive. And that solved their problem. The problem moved over to Twin Oaks area. And so now, we have the Twin Oaks folks wanting no parking signs there. And then, and then the kids will go someplace else, and it will have it someplace else. This is not just for the kids, we're doing, we have, we have the residents that have problems, all right? And we have emergency vehicles that have problems. So I'm looking for a solution, okay, to, to get these kids off the street and where they belong. They belong on school property.
Yeah, and this is what I was trying to imply...
That's long-term, though.
Just, just logistics.
The historic side is my short-term. Getting them up at the Knoll is my long-term.
Okay, but my point was, I think, long-term, if in fact, if there is room, because you said, logistically, the director of, obviously, the busing wants to be near the buses. So, if we can't find room possibly, or if we could find room possibly in that building, then we could make sure we get those buses up and out of there, we open space...
There's not adequate parking for thirty-eight spaces by the amphitheater. You would need nineteen spaces for the buses, nineteen spaces...
Yeah, but thirty-eight, why wouldn't they just park right where the buses are parked out there? They're gonna get in their bus. So you have thirty-eight cars that show up to get their buses.
Have the curvy in the one building and have the buses just up there.
Because you have the main director, per se, in that building. We find a spot for him. They show up to work.
Okay.
They go right to the buses, they park their car, and they get on the bus, and they go. Because that would leave a lot of spaces down at the high.
That's worth looking into, because we don't have to re-refurbish...
Absolutely.
The building.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll try, we'll look at that.
Yeah, just because you're just gonna, like in the military, you're gonna have them all staged, you're gonna say, this is where the director shows up, and everybody else is gonna get on their bus to...
This will happen up there.
Are you done?
Well, we're trying to make it work here.
Well, it's a private education problem. If they would look at their own property, and figure out where to put eighteen parking spaces, nobody would have a problem. And that was on Falk Trail, where they put the no parking signs up against the fence.
Okay. Go ahead. I'm trying.
I am handing out the Board of Ed's policy on student parking. Five of each council.
The school allows them to park, and they give them permits. Does not say stu-, uh, seniors, it does not say juniors.
Stating your name, please.
Pat Patacia, 182 Hawkins Avenue. Number one, my biggest peeve is, it's a school problem. Why the township wants to get involved, I have no clue, except if we're campaigning, okay? Number one, a comment was made, give the parking lot back to the kids. Sorry. Parking lot was built for the school, for the teachers, for the administrators. It wasn't meant for children, okay? I mean, that's what a parking lot is for. The schools allow seniors and juniors to go and bring their cars in when they have room. We are not obligated to find parking spots for the schools. That is their job. If there is such a problem, they should be looking at it. Apparently, it is not a big problem with them. They tell the kids, you don't have the permit, you don't have the decal, you can't park there. End of story. When I was seventeen, I got my license. I wasn't allowed to drive to school, there was not enough parking. We do this every time. A kid screams something, let's run, and give them what they want, so they stop screaming. I'm tired of it, guys. I really am. This is not a necessity. This is not something the town should be involved with at all. Twelve years, those buses have been there. There have been no problems. The reason why the kids were kicked off of Ferran was because, yes, the way they were parking, they were hanging out, they were leaving garbage, blah, 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 blah. And now we're gonna give, put them in a historical site. I'm sorry, it's wrong. It is absolutely wrong. It's a school problem. The school always says they have nothing to do with the town, the town always says they have nothing to do with the school. This is not a shared service either, okay? So, consider it. Because what you will be doing is, in the future, as the years go on, we'll be making parking lots out of everybody's yard, because kids gotta park to school. We need parking spots. They have buses, they should use the buses. I think it will be a very poor decision on this council's part to get involved with any of this. It's just gonna be a continual problem. I am really against this, and I've said it from the beginning when it was first mentioned. It is not a township problem. Now, I would like to state something, that, it's his name, Mr. Blankis. I wanna, I wanna ask the township council to find out why we have two attorneys representing us over there. Why do we have two attorneys? Can we find out? I mean, what do we... Ka-ching, ka-ching. You have an answer?
I, because I was named in one of the civil suits, I can't comment, nor can I be involved, so unfortunately, I don't have an answer for you.
Is there anybody in your office that has not been named in the suit?
Mr. Driscoll, I believe.
Okay. But you have no idea why Trimble and Driscoll?
No, no, I do not.
Okay. See, this, this is a problem also. Because you do have lawyers that represent the township, that are giving you direction, and I've said this before. There was a conflict here with Inglisino doing this part of the job. Guys, ka-ching, 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 that's all I keep saying to you guys. We gotta start raining in this money. I wish more effort was given to the Aurora billing, and the problems with our police department with all the lawsuits and a parking lot for kids. Seriously. Thank you, and I really hope you give it consideration.
Justin, I'd like to ask you if you can have Mr. Driscoll contact me and answer that question. I'd appreciate it.
I will.
Thank you.
We'll find out how much they charge you for hours.
Charlie Green, join over here.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ray Webb, 50 Hillside Lane, Porcippany, New Jersey. I, you know, I don't wanna make any allegations, but I noticed some things that weren't appropriate with the approvals given to my neighbors in the past, one was over five years ago, and the one was, last year, they would give, they were given administrative approvals to do site work when variances were required. So I'm gonna read the ordinance. Ordinance number 2002:3. The minor site plan or subdivision committee of the planning board shall review minor subdivisions and may waive formal review and public hearings by the full planning board if it is unanimous agreement that an application for development is a minor subdivision. Read down third, further, B, I mean, C. No subdivision shall be reviewed by the minor site plan or subcommittee committee. Number two, if a variance is required. And we go down to D. A subdivision that includes any of the provisions of subsections C. 1 through 4 shall be reviewed by the full planning board. And I believe in two instances with my neighbors, that variances were required, they were actually applied for, and somehow they got a, what you call, administrative approval without me being notified about their application or about their approvals. So this is important, because I have an outstanding application before the same board, and over the same road, Hillside Lane, and they somehow, looks like they're trying to avoid me. And, you know, just for the record, the first application, Hill Road Properties, 3695 Hill Road, which is Morris County Surgery Center, Block 136, Slot 51, they, they applied for a C and D variance, application 09:16, March 4th, 2009. September, their application was withdrawn, and they started doing the improvements. And there were several variances that were okayed, without me being notified, without what I say is, them following the ordinance of the town. And then this last, in July 16th, 2014, Dr. Rowe, Immediate Care Psychiatric Center, 28 Hill Road, application 14:37, for expanding their use variance from what is two condos to eight condos. So basically, my neighbor opened up a, expanded a psychiatric institute, parking all over the grass, fire zones, blocking my road to get in and out. Several times I called, you know, to the town, and, you know, it was just constant, constant over the last two years. But somehow they got approval. Somehow they got administrative approval without me finding out, or me not arguing or bringing up, you know, my concerns. And one of my concerns is patients are walking on my property. So he opened up a psychiatric institute, well, that's okay, but do it according to what the statutes are. I need, I need to know that my three daughters are safe, and that I'm gonna be hurt. And that did not happen. So I'm asking that this board or this council would look into this. And like I'm saying, I'm not accusing anybody of improprieties, but the fact is, is something went wrong. Because as far as I'm concerned, the law wasn't followed. Thank you very much.
Sir, just a quick question for you. I know you stated this, the originally started back in 2009, approximately five years ago?
2010, yeah.
Ten, okay. You mentioned the planning board, but then you talk about variances. So is, was your issue, was that with the planning board, or the board of adjustments?
Well, both applications were put into the zoning board, Board of Adjustments, but in the middle there, when they don't go before the board, both members, like Ed Snikus, Jennifer, they get involved in actually signing off on, their signatures are supposedly on these application approvals.
Have you contacted the attorney or on the Board of Adjustment? Have you tried to make contact with their, the attorney for that board?
Well, I put in the mayor's hotline, I put a complaint there, and I actually had a meeting with Jennifer and some of her staff, and I wasn't given any satisfactory answer. You know, because it's ongoing, and there's, you know, there's still a lot of issues going on. There's still, you know, here, twenty months, no improvements were made to this property that has a psychiatric institute on it. There's no parking, there's not enough parking, and so when you go from a commercial office to a psychiatric center, you need a lot more parking.
I would recommend to you, because it's the council, that you contact the chairman of the Board of Adjustment, as well as the, their attorney. And maybe they can get you some of the answers, or advise you as to exactly what happened and what's going on.
But I would, I would like this council to investigate for me what happened, because I'm not getting any answers with that. I'm not even getting responses to my Oprah requests for documents.
Hi, Mr. Webb, good to see you again. It's been a while. Just to clarify, are, are any of these complaints, because they don't sound familiar, do they have any relation to the prior litigation, or are these new? These are new? Okay. The issue that we have, and I understand your concerns, the issue that we have is, you're asking this governing body to invoke a jurisdiction that it doesn't have, because the boards, as you know, are independent agencies and there are independent appellate procedures. Unfortunately, there's nothing in the law that allows such an investigation by this governing body. But as you know, there are, there is redress in our judicial system for these issues.
Well, I was told by an official from the township that the town council has the right to investigate actions by the planning board or the Board of Adjustments. That's what I was told.
It can. The Faulkner Act does permit the township council to investigate. The problem is, the end result of the investigation, even if they did make findings that were adverse, there would be no effect of it, because they have no jurisdiction. The only jurisdiction that the council has is as an appellate body to an enforcement action of a zoning officer, but that's not what you're talking about here.
Well, it's important for public opinion to know exactly what's going on.
Sir, your, your time's up.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, really?
Peggy Mader, 2221 Gates Court. I'm the planning board secretary. I would just like to clarify that, A, they, those are zoning board matters, not planning board. And B, Mr. Snikus doesn't sign anything. He's our planning consultant. He reviews things and make recommend, makes recommendations, but he himself does not sign anything. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, see no one else come forward? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Peluso. Roll call.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
It's time, entertain a motion, open up a public hearing for this ordinance and this ordinance only.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Peluso.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. DiPiero. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
It's time, entertain a motion, open up a public hearing for this ordinance and this ordinance only.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Peluso.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. DiPiero. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
I see this ordinance as some kind of a private economic consideration over public interest. Does everybody play golf? I don't understand what's wrong with the present golf course. I know we had a presentation here about an irrigation, so we're, we wanna use more water to make it look green, thereby, we're gonna attract more people to make money for the town? Well, I'd like to know, since... Well, I'd like to know, since the Knoll Golf Course has been going, have they been an asset to the town? Or I was under the impression that they, that they weren't. It's actually some type of a losing proposition. But I, I wouldn't want my tax dollars to go toward a golf course because I just think it's, it's too much of a private and a one-sided thing. Like I said, everybody doesn't, doesn't play golf. If they needed the money, I, I just have to say this, I can't resist. When the Board of, when we had the Field of Dreams and it was voted, no, we don't want the artificial turf fields. And lo and behold, you wait, you wait enough time and a Board of Education, Board of Education finds $2.5 million of taxpayers' money and it doesn't go back to the town. Could have, could have been used at the Knoll maybe, yeah, for the irrigation system. But no, it stays to them. It's not our money anymore and it's not the town's money anymore. It's their money. So they make a deal with a contractor for the retreaded tires despite all the safety and health factors about artificial turf. They go ahead and they do what they want to do anyway. I see that in the same category as this. If you couldn't get your $2.5 million back from the Board of Education, then I, I, as a taxpayer, I don't want my, my money going toward golf. And is it possible that any of the open space funding will be used in addition to this money? That's the, the other thing. I know golf, in the beginning, they actually got away with saying that golf was part of an open space forum, but I believe it's not, it's not considered open space. But we can't go up there, we can't walk around, and they're going to take the water. And I was here when the water bill got passed off to everybody. Nobody still knows how that happened.
Time's up.
So it's just, it's, I, you know, forget it.
Mr. Homiak, I can't, I can't tell you that. I know a portion of this bonding is for the, the driving range, the new driving range that's going to be constructed up there, which is going to generate revenues for the town. But that's not this entire thing. But that's, it's, no, 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 it's, it's, there's more than one item in here, but there's a portion of this money is for the driving range. Correct?
Yeah, you know what, Nick, I just want to point out, and I know it's a concern of yours, this is a utility. So in a utility, taxpayer dollars do not support it. By law, utility must be self-liquidating, meaning its revenues must meet its expenses. Okay? And, and that has been a point of confusion here. It was purchased with Green Acres funding. Okay? So there is a small percentage that of Green Acres funding or open space dollars can be used for part of the debt service. It's a very small percentage. That is the only portion of the budgeting with regard to debt service. That is a utility that the township owns, and it's like any other facility, it requires updating and maintenance. This is all part of, you know, making sure that our investment and what we have had and enjoyed for generations continues to exist for those to come. Nick, it is a utility. And if you would like to talk to me, you know, tomorrow, I'd be more than happy to talk to you more in depth about the difference between a utility and how taxpayer dollars are used in a current fund.
All right, so you're, what you're saying is short, it won't bother you anymore, so the taxpayers' money are not going to be used for this?
No, it's a utility. The users of that utility pay for its expenses. Like I said, part of the debt service is a percentage of the Green Acres funding. So that goes to part of a very small percentage of something like $100,000. I don't have the budget number in front of me.
Okay, Paul. At this time, we're just going to take a, a five to 10 minute break, real quick, okay? We're just going to find something out. We want to get some information for ourselves. We'll be coming back, we'll be coming back. This time, entertain a motion to, make a motion, Mr. Valori. Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Stanton. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I haven't spoken in six months.
Jonathan, we just cut you down.
What happened?
It's good.
Well, this was. 2520, 2521.
Maybe we have to go to the next week.
This is the, this was.
Question is when it was moved.
Because it's an agenda meeting. They must have had a, what's that we're seeing?
They are. Okay. They're good, they're good. Yeah, keep going.
I knew she wanted it because they were asking me, Paul, and I spent my money. And I said, well, we got to wait till the next meeting. And then I was told by Nancy that Ann wants this, and then Nancy wants this for this meeting. One more time?
They had a ban.
They did?
Yeah. She was with Ray this morning, I believe.
What was that?
She was with Ray this morning.
Okay.
Did they post a position, she ready?
Nancy? Yeah.
Okay.
Hello, John, how you doing?
That's what you do.
Oh, good, thank you. What's going on here?
I just saw they started doing this, and they told me that they were going to do this, because they had advertised it here.
Oh, yeah, but it says here, from last week, to be taken by the council this evening.
Well, I want to jump.
I would assume that the guy is on here.
We're okay.
I just texted him and my message.
That's good, because they want to hear them all get up again.
It's been in a perpetual circle for two hours.
We'll get it at 1:30 in the morning. We're good.
We got to take action tonight. In fact, there was a sale today for a van, so.
Continue.
And the notice was for a second.
Okay.
Normally the format.
We usually have, I would get an answer.
You foul up again?
Yep.
You foul up again?
Make a motion to reconvene to open session?
Motion made by Mr. Stanton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. DiPiero. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We're on the same thing. Jonathan Nelson, 202 Patriots wrote, I think Paul answered it with Nick, but the bond payment is going to be paid out of golf utility every year.
Right.
Okay. The down payment, is that coming out of the golf utility?
Everything comes out of the utility.
Everything comes out of it. A portion is, is part of the funding. I don't have the number in front of me, but depending, the way Green Acres is, a percentage of the debt service can be allocated to the open space.
From the open space trust fund?
Yeah. Open space monies are used to, as it is worded in Green Acres funding, a percentage, because this is purchased with Green Acres funding. It's a very small percentage.
Okay. I just want to clarify, because this came up a couple of times, especially with the Field of Dreams about three years ago. Mr. Inglesino stated that, and I believe he stated, that if, if the property isn't purchased with open space money, on a yearly basis, you can't use open space money, tax money to fund whether it be bonding or improvements or anything else like that. Now, I don't know if Green Acres funding is the same as open space, but the Green Acres program, well, let me put it this way, the Knoll Golf Club was built before there existed an open space trust fund. So the question is, can open space money be used for that? And that, I guess, would be the legal question. That's it.
Any questions?
Yeah.
You don't have anything further?
No, no, I'm done.
Okay. I believe so, but I would have to take a look at the, at the issue and get back to you.
I'd just like to follow up on one thing, and maybe we could get some better insight here. I just noticed that like on the, on a lot of the ordinances here, and I'm going to go off from the golf one, I always see that word various, like, you know, the water utility, obviously improvements with ordinance 215:22, dealing with general improvements that they're talking about here. Is there, can we narrow down what we're actually doing at those utilities, of what we're passing those ordinance? Because it's very vague and ambiguous when you just put various water utility improvements, just so we know exactly what's being done there. So is there a possibility that with that ordinance, there might be an attachment to it and we know exactly and the public knows exactly what we're spending all this money on? You know, even with the, with the golf, we know that we discussed it in the past for that utility, right? But I think sometimes when the public reads it, they don't know all the details, and I'm not saying every specific detail, but have a better understanding, unless I'm missing something here.
It is published in the newspaper.
Okay.
Okay, and.
But can we get it on record here, so when folks show up here to a public meeting, they have a better understanding? I just think it makes it more user-friendly and it'll prevent a lot of questions from coming forward that folks have concerns. I mean, I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that, but I, to be honest with you, I could sit here and ask questions all night on all these ordinances. I know we don't want to be here all night either, right?
No, I just got to know if you come up, so.
Paul, you can certainly do, you can certainly do that going forward for the council's benefit as part of the agenda. Obviously, the, the improvements are set forth in the body of the ordinance itself, which is not here, but certainly for reference purposes, there's no reason why that can't be done with the phone.
Because they, for example, we approve the ordinance like $5,800,000.
Okay, you don't have backup to that.
Yeah, just so we know. Or like, and you come back to say, well, you voted on this for these approvals, and then you're going to go, then we can't go well. We didn't know that. So it's kind of a fail-safe for everybody.
All right.
That's all. Thank you.
You have any questions on them? I can answer them for you. I mean, going forward, absolutely now, but if you have anything for tonight.
Yes, Paul, I agree with you as well, because, you know, one coming up is about over $2 million on painting of a tank, you know, and, and I thought that was a little bit excessive. But as, after asking further questions, it's more involved and there's more details to it that was not outlined for me.
It's our largest, just as a point of fact, it's interesting, it's our largest tank.
Right. So, you know, if we had more pertinent information, it would help us make better decisions.
Okay.
Well, the information itself is all in the ordinance. I think what Mr. Valori was saying was, is that if there could just be, for purposes of the agenda, if there's just some reference that would freshen, trigger their recollection, because I'm sure they've read the ordinances, they, they know that it would just trigger recollection so that it's fresh in their minds.
And it's helpful to the folks in the audience too when they're.
They don't have to go through, yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Tapatia 182 Hawkins Avenue. Excuse me. It's a very good idea. I mentioned it myself a few times.
I'll give you credit for that.
No, no, checks and balances, first of all. Who's keeping track of what really is done and what's not done? You guys are giving them the okay to do it, but are you watching to make sure it's done? We've had money left over on things that weren't done, and then it just gets lost. So this is a good way, if you have them attached, check it, and then you can check months later. Was this done? Was this done? Very good idea. The bonding, how long is the bonding for, for the golf? How many years?
15 year, I believe it's a 15 year bond. Don't, don't, you know, write that description on there.
Yeah, well, I just trying to understand because I know it was being bonded for, I knew it was coming out of.
I believe it's for a 15 year.
Yeah, I knew it was coming, supposedly coming out of the, the Knoll was going to be paying for it, so, but, you know, it's going to take years to even get the Knoll to get up there. About 15 years should give us time.
Yeah, we're doing pretty good though, I have to say. I'm happy to say.
Yeah?
Yep.
I hope so.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Mrs. Cazarell, I just have a question. On the, the down payment, which is the 5% of the borrowing, is that coming out of the capital improvement fund?
The 5% down payment is, no, there's a 5% down payment and then there's a total down payment including the capital improvement fund.
And how much is coming out of capital improvement?
150.
Okay, so 150 is coming out of the capital improvement?
No, capital improvement's different than open space. It's all depends on, I don't have the allocation in front of me, but.
Okay.
Okay, see no one else come forward? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing in this ordinance?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Stanton. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage to said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. DiPiero, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ordinance 2015:21, an ordinance of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills and the County of Morris, New Jersey, providing for various water utility improvements for the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills and appropriating $2,120,000 therefore and providing for the issuance of $1,995,000 in general improvement bonds or notes of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills to finance the same. The notice for the ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, on August 18th, 2015. Motion to accept that ordinance, 2015:21, to be heard in its second and final reading by title only.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Paluso, seconded by Mr. DiPiero. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
This time, entertain a motion to open up the public hearing in this ordinance, this ordinance only?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Paluso, seconded by Mr. Stanton. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? See no one come forward? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Motion made.
Second.
Good.
Now you passed the last one.
State your name and address.
Tapatia 182 Hawkins Avenue. Now, the last one was just passed. I thought they needed like three final readings.
No.
No? Just two?
Introduction, one meeting, adoption, and next.
Really?
Correct.
Well, I just got somebody hopping up here.
Jonathan Nelson, 202 Patriots wrote, I assume that all the money is coming out of the water utility to pay for this, for, pay for the water tank. I was just up here five minutes ago and I asked if any tax dollars were going to be used for the golf, the golf one, and the capital, the capital budget is our taxes, not, not a utility. So I guess my follow-up question here, to keep it on point, is, is any money out of the capital budget being applied for this bonding?
No, these are capital ordinances within the utility budget. These are utility capital items.
Your question is, your question is not correct. We have capital expenditures within the Knoll utility. We have capital expenditures within the SUI utility. That's all still money within those utilities.
And funded by the utilities to pay it back.
There's a capital fund within the utility, Mr. Nelson. When you say the capital fund, I think that the assumption on the dais was, as it should have been, that it was the capital fund within the utility.
That, that's what I was asking. And I, I misunderstood your answer then before. Then, then just to be clear, with the water utility here, all money, the down payment and the annual payments are coming out of the, out of the, out of the water utility. And just like with the golf utility, except for a few dollars in Green Acres funding, which Mr. Inglesino said he's going to research, it's all coming out of the golf utility budget. Okay. Thank you.
By the way, the Knoll Country Club was purchased on with the first Green Acres, New Jersey State Green Acres bond. We helped push for that and, and the Knoll was one of the first projects approved under the first New Jersey State Green Acres bond.
Okay, at this time, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Paluso, seconded by Mr. Valori. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that the said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage to said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Paluso, seconded by Mr. DiPiero. Roll call.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Yes.
I think that the assumption on the dais was, as it should have been, that it was the capital fund within the utility.
That's what I was asking, and I misunderstood your answer then before. Then, then just to be clear, with the water utility here, all money, the down payment and the annual payments are coming out of the, out of the, out of the water utility, and just like with the golf utility, except for a few dollars in green acres funding, which Mr. Ingleseino City is going to research, it's all coming out of the golf utility budget. Okay. Thank you.
By the way, the Noel Country Club was purchased on, with the first green acres, New Jersey State Green Acres Bond. We helped push for that, and, and the Noel was one of the first projects approved under the first New Jersey State Green Acres Bond.
Okay, at this time entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Make motion.
Motion made by Mr. Paluso, seconded by Mr. Valori, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that the said ordinance be passed on final reading, and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Paluso, seconded by Mr. DePiero, roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Corrifi?
Yes. Mr. Stanton?
Ordinance 2015:22, ordinance of township Porcipina Troy Hills and the county of Morris, New Jersey, providing various capital improvements for the township of Porcipina Troy Hills, appropriate $9,863,000, 863,381, therefore, provided for issuance of $9,294, $211 in general improvements, bonds or notes, township of Porcipina Troy Hills to finance the same. Notice for the ordinance was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of township of Porcipina Troy Hills, August 18, 2015.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. DePiero, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This time entertain a motion to open up the public hearing on this ordinance and this ordinance only?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Stanton, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I just want to be real brief. Can we get microphones that work in one of these budgets?
What we are getting, Nick, is pervious parking spots in front of our municipal building.
Patacia 182 Hawkins Avenue.
I mean, Mary.
Sorry, I'm just coming back to you for a minute. It has to do with it, but if this is an agenda meeting, and we're setting for the regular meeting, why are we voting at an agenda meeting?
I had, I had the same question, which is the reason for the recess. The reason is because there are reasons that relate to the sale of the bonds that creates an impetus for the vote to be tonight. I checked during the break to confirm that the public hearing for these ordinance was properly advertised for tonight, and in fact, it was. So while it is a bit of an anomaly in terms of the way in which the council usually conducts its business, it is, the public hearing and action on the ordinance has been publicly noticed for this evening, so the council is acting appropriately and properly, and as I understand it, is motivated by an issue related to the closing of the bonds.
Your motivation is, guys? Okay.
Very good question, Ms. Patacia. You got to go to start.
I just wanted to inject today that I spoke to the CMFO, and she did say there was a sale today of notes, so I concur that there was a sale.
Okay, see no one else come forward, entertain a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Valori, all in favor?
Aye.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved said ordinance be passed on final reading, that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. DePiero, roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton? Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Corrifi?
Yes. Mr. Valori?
Ordinance 2015:23, an ordinance of the township of Porcipina Troy Hills and the county of Morris, New Jersey, appropriating $580,000 for various sewer utility capital improvements. The notice of this ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the township of Porcipina Troy Hills, on August 18, 2015.
Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Stanton, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This time entertain a motion to open up the public hearing on this ordinance, this ordinance only?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Paluso, seconded by Mr. Stanton, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd just like to know, Paula, I'll inject here, various utility capital improvements that closed.
Okay.
See no one come forward, entertain a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance? Motion made by Mr. Paluso, seconded by Mr. Stanton, all in favor?
Aye.
Good.
Yeah, just Paula, with the various...
I did notice that emphasis.
I know, I just, give me a little bit of update here. It's been a long night.
Yes.
What type of improvements are getting done on that, this particular...
For the sewer?
Yeah.
What we're doing is, as a matter of fact, you know, one can plan, however emergencies do occur, so the item that's in here is on Bloomfield Ave, we actually had an emergency where the line collapsed prior to us being here right now, so that is an emergency situation that you're going to see coming your way. The other, the other is relative to flow mag meters, it's important that the sewer plant have proper measurement of its effluence or influence coming in, so we can bill appropriately. And then we have a camera, it's kind of interesting, it's on wheels, almost like a tractor, and it goes in the pipes, and it TV's where blockages are and whatnot, so that's part of the improvement as well, and all of these improvements will be fully funded through using fund balance from the sewer utility.
Okay, great.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Oh, sorry about that, yeah. One of those nights. Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading, a hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law.
Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Stanton, roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Corrifi?
Yes. Mr. DePiero, just before you read this next one, I just have a question in reference to this. These white collar salary ranges, I know we ran into an issue last year, where the mayor had given merit raises to certain employees that pushed their salary beyond the salary range for that title. Do we have anybody in that situation this year? Do we know?
You know what, Council President, I'm going to have to say, I assume that that was done with that in mind. I did not review this portion, so I'm going to assume that we're pretty safe. Each of these ranges were increased, I believe, by 6%, which are generally, and, and keep in mind, these ranges are pretty broad, where the maximums, we have a lot of people not really close, and they really should be within 6% below the maximum range, is my understanding.
Right, I just know last year, we had people that went beyond, before the ranges were increased, we had people that had gone beyond the max range. And then we were asked to approve the ranges after they were given, after these merit raises were given to these people. So my question was, was anybody given a merit raise, which pushed then beyond the top of that range?
Okay, I'm going to have to defer that. Listen, I can only assume that our CFO did her due diligence in ensuring that, but I can't speak for her, but I, I feel pretty confident that she took that in consideration.
And the other thing, I just want to, I see the mayor's back, just to make sure that the increases that we're doing now are enough above, so that when people get their 2% raises and stuff in the future for the next couple of years, that they're within the range.
What we did was, remember, when we're dealing with these salary ranges, they won't look at on an annual, we're looking at them annually. I spoke to the chief financial manager of the town, and that they've been working on it, and it should be safe, but I, you know, I didn't match them up against the salaries, but that's why they, they increased a certain percentage, so we don't have that problem.
Council President, have you discussed it in the finance committee?
No.
Would you like to table it until it's discussed?
Yeah, I was going to say, why don't we just, before we make a decision, it's going to involve...
Because it seems like we have unanswered questions.
Yeah, I would feel more comfortable with that. That's not going to, I don't think it's going to hurt anybody with their...
Is that, is this something that's pertinent?
Because then you could go back and double-check, because I know the CFO and the BA is on your...
You can give the administration more time to answer the question.
Why don't you, why don't you make a motion to table the ordinance until next week?
For next week.
Which is September 22nd?
Yeah, that's more than...
It would be a motion to table the ordinance for a public hearing until September, Tuesday, September 22th of this year at 7:30 PM here in the municipal building. Okay, do I have a motion to...
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Valori, roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Corrifi?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Paluso?
Okay, resolution 2015-150, resolution of the Township Council, the township of Porcipina Troy Hills, approving and authorizing retail liquor license renewals for the licensing term July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2016. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Motion made by Mr. Paluso, seconded by Mr. Stanton, roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Corrifi?
Yes.
Which one of these pertains to these...
Mr. Stanton?
Or 2015-151, resolution Township Council, township of Porcipina Troy Hills, approving and authorizing retail liquor license renewal for the licensing term July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2016, basket of cheer two. I also want to add to that, due to the fact that we were given this last May day, that in our resolution, that we agreed to terms 1, 2, and 4 for now, and cable 3, for what we were handed out about the basket of cheer, that we add terms 1, 2, and 4.
Can't we, can't we just make this a provisional approval, dependent upon resolution of those items?
Provisional of your power.
Oh, it's a conditional.
Yeah. Conditional approval.
Based on the expiration of their permit.
I would rather not be that specific, let them...
Well, I don't think that we, I don't think it's fair, me personally, to make one establishment have a security officer there three nights a week, when we're not going to make everybody else.
I, I agree, I agree, however, that's the purpose of making this provisional. We don't close them down, and we have a chance to talk about it.
Yeah, and we'll discuss those items.
We're not going to edit right now, tonight, tonight.
Right.
Right.
So how long can we...
Well, it just looks like it went to the chief back in July.
Back in July.
They were just served, it came out yesterday, the other day, yesterday, Friday.
And they spoke, and they had no objections to 1, 2, and 4, that's why I figured, might as well throw it in.
And thank you for coming forward to make us aware of this.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I think you can proceed in that way.
But if we make it provisional, are we requiring to have a guard?
No, no, 1, 2, and 4, I took the guard away.
You took the guard away?
Yeah, no, you're going to, you're going to pass 1, 2...
Okay.
Okay.
If, if I may ask, is what, or, let me, I'd like to just ask you a question, are you 1, 2, 1, 2, and 4 on this, on this...
Sir, can you come to the mic?
I know you came up and stated that you were okay with...
1, 2, and 4, you pass. Yeah.
1 and 4 is definitely no objection, we definitely, the second one, we need clarification, because we do not know what this licensing employee is.
Is that normal for all liquor establishments? Normal. I'm sure there's precedent for it, but if the council has questions, you know, directed to the, to the police department regarding some of these items, I think what you can do is you can, so that they can remain in operation, you can approve it, as Councilman Stanton indicated, for items 1, 2, and 4, and make the other items conditional.
Okay.
On, on further clarification from the police department.
All right, when I actually made my motion, I was only talking about the first part of number 2, which was the identifying shirts.
To wear the shirts.
So I'm going to strike the second half of 2, and just, just identifying shirts, which I really don't think you have a problem with.
Yeah, because we just, we do not know if there is any licenses that go out, man, for the employees, there's nothing...
Mr. Stanton, let me get this correct, you're, you're saying to have number 1, the first part of number 2, and number 4?
Yes.
Are you clear with that, sir, so you understand?
Too strictly the shirts, wearing an identifier.
That's not a problem.
Okay.
As licensed employees?
Yes.
What's, what's the problem with the second half of number 2?
Well, what licensing...
Says all employees will continue to be cleared by the police department, ABC officer.
I don't believe that's a, I think we're restricting, because I don't believe all the towns have their employees go through an ABC, NBC, ABC, and those regulations. So I think what they're doing is pinpointing...
Do all the bars?
That's my problem.
Yeah, okay, I just want to understand the problem.
Yeah, that's the only reason.
So you can pass number 1, number 2, up until the semi-colon after the word duty, and number 4. The balance of number 2 and number 3 will be also approved conditionally on further clarification. The intention is not to burden the establishment with those conditions until those conditions are clarified to the mutual satisfaction of, to the satisfaction of the council.
We wanted to remove it at this point.
Yeah.
Not approve.
Well, if you remove them, then you can't bring them back, because then you will have approved, then you will have...
Table until further discussion.
Well, you can't table, because they're licensing...
They're licensed up.
All right, now I'm saying just...
So what I would suggest you do, since it seems like there's pressure to take action tonight, is you would, you would approve the, the application, subject to the, the points raised in the memo from the police department dated September 11th, 2015, with the understanding that there needs to be clarification, further clarification, with respect to the second half of number 2 and all of number 3. And the intention of the council is not to burden the establishment with, with, with conditions that are potentially onerous, but at this point, certainly unclear, and that there will be a meeting set up after this meeting with the PD and the administration and the establishment to come to an understanding as to what the requirement is with respect to the second part of number 2 and number 3, and we'll report back to the council on what those are, and if there is a need for further action from the council, then we will put that before the council at that time. So that would be what I would recommend be put forward in the form of a motion.
I make a motion of whatever he just said.
So as of right now, the second half of 2 and 3 is out, and if you want to add that... Well, it's, it's, it's in, it's in, because you can't, it's in, but it's, it's in, but there is, again, it's in, subject to clarification of what it means, you can't take it out, because you can never take it back in. So what the concept is, is you leave it in, but it's sort of dormant for the moment, because we really don't know what it means.
And it can be removed.
It, it can either be removed, or likely happen is, is that there will be further clarification, really, for, for your benefit, sir, and for the council as well, with respect to those, those two items.
So you will not have to hire a security guard, you will not have to do that at this point, there'll be a meeting in the future.
But once we get the clarification, after that wrote that, that's important, have that clarification, you might have a reason why you have to do that, but I think what the council is saying is that...
Let's understand it.
Operation.
You need to operate, and we need to work this out.[1611.33]
Yeah, yeah.
Unfortunately, it's, it's coming up at the, at the last minute, so we're.
And this is not requirement for across the board, right? This is what my assumption is. This is just specific to us and not township requirement.
Exactly.
Well, I can't say that it's just to you, but it's not a general township requirement. So we will, we will, the meeting will be set up with you immediately so that we can work out the clarification issues that were just discussed.
Thank you. Thank you.
And we apologize for the confusion. This should have never happened at O'Dark Hour prior to, uh, they come up to vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Entertained a motion, oh, Mr. DiPiero made that motion, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton? Mr. Vlory?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Mr. Vlory?
Yes. Resolution 2015 dash 152. Resolution of Township Council of Township Precipice Troy Hills, appointing an acting municipal clerk.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Vlory, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Vlory?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Um, before we go into closed session, I just had a question. I just wanted to ask the mayor, uh, in reference to if you were going to, when you would be presenting us with a name of, uh, an attorney for the committee as a whole, the council?
I'll, I'll let you know next minute. I'll let you know before the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Closed session, resolution, whereas the Open Publics Meeting Act of Public Law 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the township council is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the township council wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege and personnel matters?
Uh, it would be, um, ongoing, uh, litigation, uh, and that specifically would be the, uh, the affordable housing litigation, declaratory judgment action that I filed on the end of the township. Uh, that's really the, uh, the item that I have for closed session.
And whereas minutes will be kept, and once a matter involving the confidentiality above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public, now therefore be it resolved by the township council of the township of Precipice Troy Hills, and that the public be excluded from this meeting. Second. Motion to adjourn made by myself, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Vlory?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Jimmy, so you already want me to come now? Don't worry about it, Jimmy. I have no idea why you're even on the agenda.
I'm supposed to make the presentation on the new.
It would be nice if somebody actually surprised me or Jim or somebody or confirmed me. I mean.
It was in, it was in the.
It was on the agenda, you know? I, that's one of the things. I can't just say that's different. That's easy. That's a research. Yes, Mary. Oh, that's so nice, Mary. I will, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. It was very, yes. It was really nice, Mary. I will let her know you said that, and I'm going to put that on her chair. Absolutely.
I do know that you. Hey!
Man, that was bad. So you're going to hit this out. She says, I don't want to. I used to drive. Huh?
It wasn't great. I got on the phone. Oh, okay.
Yes.
Oh, it does say that.
All right, uh, give me a call and let me know about.
We'll see you later. We're going down.
I think this is.
I told you.
Yeah, we finally got.
A lot of time coming.
Six, eight years.
Nobody was together.
Hello there.
Nobody wanted to.
How about you?
Yeah.
Yeah.